No, I'm just, I gotta make sure that that's working.
You're that fast anymore. The time is four thirty P M. The Pelican Rapids City Council meeting of twenty-four June twenty twenty-five is called to order. And ask those in our council chambers sign the clipboard before you leave this evening. Also, if everyone, please put their phones on vibrate. We'll call a member, Daniel.
Councilmember Steve Stran.
Here.
Councilmember Shelley Gummbringer.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kurt Markraff.
Here.
Councilmember Donna Perrin.
Yeah.
And Mayor Brent Fraser.
Here. Well, to welcome each and every one of you that are in the city council chambers, also those joining us by Zoom. Please remember our city council meetings on the Pelican Rapids. YouTube channel as well and channel fourteen on Wednesday evening. Uh, just a couple announcements for the next couple of weeks. Uh, Friday, July fourth is the Independence Day. City offices are closed and our next city council meeting is scheduled for July eighth. At four thirty P M. In the city council chambers. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? If not, we all please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is citizens' comments. Uh, there is no way in the council chambers at this time. Item number three additions, deletions to the agenda. Any additions or deletions? I have none. Anyone else? Don't ask, support I. Any other addition or deletion? Motion to approve. Okay. Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say if I could say aye. I suppose the same motion. Carry. Item number four is approval of consent agenda, which I'll read. Item number four A is approval of council minutes from June tenth twenty twenty-five. Four B, approval accounts payable listing. Four C one, a staff report, utility report from May, which was in the packet. Four. C two is liquor store report, which is in the packet. Item number four D, attempt to certify. Attempt to certify the taxes. Item number one is addresses four seven Northwest Second Street, parcel number. Seven six zero 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 nine nine zero three seven four zero zero zero. Amount due is two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents in unpaid utility bills. Item four D food addresses three four Northwest Third Avenue, parcel number seven six. Zero 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 nine nine zero one zero seven zero zero zero. Amount due is two hundred and thirty-two dollars and ten cents unpaid utility bills. Item number four D three is address three three Northeast First Avenue, parcel number seven six zero 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 nine nine zero one six two zero zero zero. Mount to two hundred and thirty-two dollars and ten cent and unpaid utility bills. Is there a motion to approve? So move second.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, saying if I was saying aye. What was the same motion carried. That brings up item number five is rental housing discussions. This is just discussion. We will not have to make a motion this evening. And I think both Danielle and Lance are going to present this.
Yeah, this is just continuing the, the discussion of last, last council meeting. Um. So Sid gave us a proposal to, to continue his services as rental inspecting. Um. We've just had some recent troubles of just getting, getting these landlords to get this done and we're just looking for options to incentivize them to get, get things more, get things done before the deadline. Um, you asked for a list of properties and things and that was in the packet. Um. I've been reaching out to other communities and things to see what they've been doing. Uh, there are not many. There is one maybe that does not do any kind of rental inspections right now. Um. Others, most, most others even in this area have an on-staff person. Doing these inspections. So it's, it's hard to find anyone else who is actually doing these like Sid. Um. Sid is, is uh, increasing his, his uh, fees to seventy dollars a unit. I've. Talked to others around. That would be about the highest around. I think um, other communities are anywhere in that twenty-five to fifty range per unit. Um. So. That's where we're sitting. I'm trying to find other, another person or a, an inspector who would be willing to at least shoot us a price or anything, but I can't even find that. I mean. Technically, we don't really need a special license to do it. So someone on staff here could do it, but it would be the. Finding the time to do it as well. And it, it, there are benefits to have an outside person come in and do it. Um.
What does that do it in officer on staff? Do they have to go to training?
I think there is some other, some training and things, but there's not technically a license that you need to get from what I understand. Um.
So that's why their rates are lower. Because they do it in.
Well, yeah.
Be high sometimes.
I mean, we're not, we're, our rates are only going to be whatever Sid is charging and it's just, it's nothing that we're putting on top of it. It's, it's just being able to pay, pay him. Um. Some other things we were kicking around to incentivize them is, is to raise our penalty. So if they're not done by that January one, right now our penalty is a hundred dollars and then ten dollars a week after that. Um, so if we raised it to maybe five hundred, maybe that would get their attention. I don't know. Um. And then his fees are also after January one go up substantially as well, which. Which that I'm fine with. I mean, that, that would incentivize people to get it done by that January one. After January one, I believe his, his cost to come would be a hundred and twenty, I believe. So. I, I believe that's fair. I mean, if you can't get it done in that September to December range and you're, and you're. Not getting it done by the deadline, then there should be some, some penalties after that. But, um. Just looking at more thoughts on, we'll need to get this done in July sometime or one of the meetings in July because the agreement would start August first. So. I don't know if there's any other questions on what Sid does or his contract or. Any other thoughts or suggestions on what, what we can do to.
Sid had mentioned the situation has gotten worse, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So going back, is it always, is it like repeat? Tenants or a record? Or is it buried?
In the past, it's always seemed like once they've gotten charged the hundred dollars, they are incentivized enough to, um. To get it done. I've never seen it like it is this year. Yeah, I don't, I don't know why. I mean, the. It's June and these people haven't. I mean, they're still getting charged the ten dollars a week and, and they just don't seem all that motivated.
Ever ten dollars at least.
Right, but a hundred dollars on top of that and Sid's fee is still going up and I, I mean, they, they just don't seem motivated to get it taken care of. I don't, I don't understand it. Yeah.
Well, this, if they don't pay, what about their taxes?
Um. I could. I've never had an instance where I haven't had them pay. Um, right now, it's just that they're just not even communicating with us. You know, we've sent letters. If we have their email address, we've sent emails. If we had their phone number, we've tried calling. They're just not responding to us at all.
What, other than monetary, is there any repercussions? Like, if they don't get it done, the place can be labeled. We don't know if it's fit for rental, so we're not going to renew your rental license.
Well, so right now, after the last council meeting, I went and talked to Todd and he looked it up and he can, um. Ticket them, he can cite them. So we sent out a letter letting these ones that are still out there know that. If we don't hear from them and we gave them a deadline, then this is going to be turned over and become a police matter. And so then after that, then we're going to turn it over to him and he'll cite them for it. I believe they'll have to go to court and all that good fun stuff.
I think that's an option moving forward to do that.
Yeah.
January one rather than.
And we'll, yeah. Yeah. Bump that up a lot sooner. Yeah.
Do we know if the city has any liability if they haven't been inspected and there's an incident and somebody's injured or killed or?
I'm sure somebody could come back and try and say it. I don't know.
I think as long as the enforcement tent was there that.
Yeah, if we show that we tried. To do our part.
Is that high rise in this list?
They are not. Um, about every, I don't know, so many years, um, I contact them and they provide a list. They get inspected by. I don't know what agency, but they, every one of their, um, units get inspected and they have provided a list of what gets inspected for. And it's the same stuff that Sid does. So it would be. Repetitious for them to do it. And so we have, we haven't made them do it where other agencies will come in and just do like one or two apartments maybe. Or don't check for the same things. Um, so we've kind of stayed. That's the way we've gone with it in the past.
They're funded somehow.
Yeah.
Have the requirement to have inspection.
Yeah.
So the other cities that do it in house, do they have a lot of delinquents? Situations?
If I didn't really ask that question, I think, I know they have. I'm sure they have some, but I don't know if it's a major problem or not. I mean. They also have, I mean, it's part of their position is building inspectors. So they're doing like construction inspectioning and zoning things as well. So.
How many are we talking about?
How many patterns? I think it was five or six.
And are they different names? All?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yeah, that's five or six different landlords. Owners.
So that would be a number of.
Um, yes, I think most of them. I think there is one that is multiple units. I remember if he was. Like twelve units. But otherwise. The other ones are just like one unit. And we have a couple that were like inspected once and then when they got the list of what they have to fix up, then we've never heard from them again. And so it's just.
So you're looking at a meeting in July when we want to finalize this?
Well, if we want to keep going with Sid, I mean, his, his agreement is for August first. So, um. One thing I was just thinking about, I think this coming year, there's only forty-two units. Coming up for inspection. I mean, the other years, there's about right around a hundred and fifty each year. I think last year was right around a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I believe so.
So. That's a lot less units. Um. If there was ever a time to try it in-house, maybe this year is the year since there's only forty-two. If you were interested, I, I, we can. I don't know how much of a time commitment that's going to be. Forty-two units is still a lot if we're.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if that's the real option route to go or not, because I mean, if we did, then we can set our price wherever we want.
Does it have to be a full-time staffer or could it be? A part-time person paid by these rental fees like we give to Sid or that could be their income and as needed. You know, have somebody in the community or. You know, do you have to obviously have some type of training for fire code and. Whatever else is required, running water, flushing toilets. I can't remember everything. It's like your gall, that's not overloaded, you know, things like that. But it, yeah.
It's basically kind of like a summer help, but just a type part-time for that fall.
Somebody in town that's retired that thought you do something like that, your money.
Yeah. Okay, we can look into that part. It's a good idea.
Any other discussion? So how often does each year get inspected?
Every three years.
Sid does this for other cities?
I don't know. I mean, I know he's in Barnesville. I don't know if he's the building inspector there.
He's not doing rental inspections in Barnesville. That was one that is, does not currently have one.
Okay.
But he wa, I think he was or he has done things for them. I don't know if it's, was rental or just building inspection or what, but.
Yeah. And I know like, and I don't, I don't know if Frazee, I mean, I know in the past he had done them in Frazee and, um. I guess I don't know where else. But.
So if it is in-house. But there's still is the issue of the people that don't get the inspections done. That part didn't go away.
Right.
So then still changing it to a legal matter would make sense.
Yeah.
Cause that's scarier.
Yeah.
Got teeth if you gotta go answer to a judge while you haven't had your.
Yeah.
Place that you're letting people live. Inspected specifically.
Yeah.
So sending the citation letter right away, January one. Would be way to go.
Yeah. That's what we're.
That's what I would do. Let's stick with Sid. I guess we got at least two weeks to think about this.
Yeah.
Just at the end of the next.
Yeah. Well, Steve had asked me to, uh, supply the list with the addresses on them. And so I'll do that at the next meeting too. So.
Are you looking to? Uh, pass it next meeting or the last meeting of the ones?
I guess I, I don't, I mean, I suppose the earlier the better for Sid's sake, but.
Hurt to have a very good idea which direction you want to go by next council meeting. At least you don't necessarily would have to approve if you wanted to go Sid's route or.
Right.
I mean, you wouldn't have to approve it at that meeting, but have a good idea which way you want to go. Um, we'll include that agreement again in the next packet and, and then any information we can have on. The other option of a part-time employee or something.
Any more discussion before we move on? Any more discussions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number six ordinance, liquor ordinance, which was in our packet also. Danielle, you going to speak to that?
I was.
This is just an FYI at this point.
Um, after spending many, 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 many hours on. This ordinance, we, we basically rebuilt this entire ordinance and. It's beautiful now. Um. Made a lot of changes. But really didn't. We just updated it, I would say, because in the old ordinance, it didn't allow for like. Tap rooms or brew rooms or any of the newer stuff. And I wanted to make it more. Or be more proactive in case any of those items wanted to come to town instead of reactive. Um, so we added licenses for all of those items in here. Um. And so that's the stuff that we added to this, but, um. Overall, we didn't make a whole lot of changes. I think we. Like I think in the old one, it only allowed for, um. Three intoxicating liquor licenses and we can have up to five by law. So we changed that one up to five. Um, but otherwise everything else pretty much stayed the same.
Make it more restrictive anyway.
Mm-mm. No, and we allow, ours like was so old, but it didn't even allow to stay open until two A M. Um, now we do allow if, if. The place wants to buy the extra license to stay open until two A M. They can do that. Um. But yeah, so we just added those extra licenses, allowed for the two A M. Opening. And that's pretty much all the changes that we made. Allowed for, um. Drinking in. The public parks with. Approval from the city. So not. Anybody can just be drinking in the park whenever they want to, but if they come and get the license. Through, through the city, then they'll be allowed like a beer wagon or whatever wants to, um, for an event.
Like the music in the.
Yeah, yeah, they're allowed to. And there'll be one here for Pelican Fest. They'll be allowed to. Um. So right now I've given it to you guys, um, to look over. I do have it down at the city attorney's. Office for her to look over and give her opinion. I don't foresee her having it done in the next two weeks. Um, but when she has come back with any of her comments, then I'll bring it to council. Um, and we'll do our posting and then approve it. Any questions?
When you say we.
Oh, the ordinance committee that we put together. Um, it was me and Brian and Todd and Lance and Brent.
They were meeting every Wednesday.
Yeah, it's the same group that talked about. Public nuisance and grass letters. And that's kind of all we've gotten done so far.
Any other questions? But we'll be seeing this again in the near future.
Yep.
Other questions? If not, we'll move on. Item number seven, resolution number two zero two five dash one six, calling for a public hearing and I want to use seconds. Danielle.
This, this, we actually get to do something about. This is, um, Mike Carlson asked for tax abatement on the, um. Lot up on Ridge Crest that he's going to build a twin home on. So we have to have a public hearing in order to do that. This, the tax abatement will actually be passed on to whoever the homeowner will be. If he doesn't do this now. Then they can't get the tax abatement when they purchase the home. So it'll be. Up to five thousand dollars. Um, of tax abatement. Is it over five years? Up to five years?
Years, five thou.
Five thousand or up to, up to five thousand or five years. Um, so this is just calling and setting the public hearing for that. Any questions?
Oh, it was too much.
It is, but the one he couldn't build on, we had to, uh, make that one a.
It's an outlot, so it's not, not buildable.
Yeah, so this is just the one that he can build on.
This public hearing will be on July twenty ninth.
Yes, yeah. So I can get it in the paper for the allotted days and all that stuff.
I want to approve, well, two zero two five dash one. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, saying if I was saying aye. Uh, what was the same? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number eight is Lakes Country Service Cooperative Technology Service Agreement, which was in your packet. Uh. Lance, do you want to speak to that, please?
Yes, we've always contracted through Lakes Country for our tech services. Um, it was just last year where they started doing this. Um. They used to just kind of bill us as we use them. Now we're kind of going to contract so they can do a little more proactive stuff. For us. Uh, last year it was eighteen hundred dollars for the year. This year it's just up to a little bit to nineteen thirty-five a year. Um. I have had some other. Um, technology companies reach out and, or propose some services. Um. I just don't think we can afford any of them. I, they're, instead of nineteen thirty-five a year, it's more like. Thousand or more a month. So I just don't think we can go that route. I think they'd probably offer a little more than what we're getting now, but, um. Overall, we're happy with Lakes Country. Um. They are short-staffed, so it does take a bit sometimes, but, um, and we are slowly getting. Um, updated with things. Uh, we will be going to office three sixty-five finally. Um, so we're getting. Hopefully getting caught up. I think we're a little bit behind on the technology side, but we're getting, I think we're getting there. Um, so. Just need the approval to continue with Lake Country, I guess.
I'll make a motion to change. I'll second. Motion second, discussion. 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 Hearing none, all in favor, second probably saying aye. Uh, what was the same? Motion carried. Item number nine, administrator report. Lance?
All right, since the last meeting, uh, I attended an E D C meeting, attended a department head meeting. Uh, met weekly with the ordinance committee and finished the revised version of chapter six, attended the weekly fifty-nine one oh eight construction and public meetings. Uh, worked with S E H, continued to work with S E H and Elsners on that needed work for the monitoring wells at the lagoons, attended the monthly M C M A regional member meeting. Uh, worked with Ottertail County to finalize the reconveyance sale and recording of the Southwest property or continuing to work with them with that. Uh, working with Jack Rosenthal, a boundary pro on the preliminary plat for the Southwest property. Uh, attended the pool grand opening, met with frontier engineer about the energy audits for the water and wastewater plants. Um, working with Lakes Country Service Cooperative on converting to office three sixty-five and met with site on sound today about the sound system here in the council chambers. Hopefully it is working, but I, it's questionable. So we're working on getting a quote to get. Upgraded microphones and things. If you've noticed, if you've gone back on the meetings here just recently, the sound is not, not good and we're continuing to work on it, but. Any questions?
For Lance?
Thank you.
Item number ten, mayor reports a few items in the past couple of weeks. Uh. Attended, uh. Video ordinance meetings on the eleventh and eighteenth of June and. Film a street, uh, project video on seventeenth. Eleven seventeenth and twenty-fourth of June with, uh, Jordan Grossman. Uh, attended, uh, two. Street project staff meetings here at city hall, the twelfth and nineteenth of June, they conducted. Two different, uh, street project public meetings at the library on the same page, twelfth and nineteenth of June, presented the welcome at the friendship festival on June fourteenth. Uh, presented the welcome at the Pelican Rapids Aquatic Center Open House this past Friday on June twentieth. Met with administrator Royson this morning to plan the agenda for this. Afternoon city council meeting and then also presented a welcome and brief history of the river restoration project. To, uh, the lizard Sam's Arthur Heritage Council. That was here this morning. Uh, they did a tour of different projects and I think it was mostly Ottertail, Becker County, and they just wanted to know. The history of, of our, uh. The Amri Bubal River Restoration Project, because they, they are, they are the council that supplied the funding to the D N R. So for this project, we have here in Pelican Rapids. So for this project, we have your Pelican Rapids. Any questions? Thank you. Seeing no other business or a motion to adjourn? Is that second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. I, I, I suppose the same. Meeting adjourned.